I'd like to call this meeting to order this time. First of all, we'd like to thank all of you for being here tonight. We'd also like to thank those present via media for their presence as well. At this time, we'll do roll call. We show all members of the council that present except for Mayor Leach and Don Wilson. We'll excuse them tonight. It will be led by the invocation by Councilman Hatch. And then Councilman Alsop will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All those that want to participate, please stand.
For kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity that we have to join together as a Cholo City Council. We ask that thy Spirit will be with us, that we will conduct ourselves respectfully and pay the attention to all of those facts that are presented to us. We thank you for this last weekend when we all had family join us. And whether we joined the family or they joined us, we thank you for the opportunity to do that and remember those that are not with us today. We ask a blessing on those that are ill with COVID. We ask a blessing on those that have lost family members. And we ask that thou will be with us through this day. Let me say that in my Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is called to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is within the city's jurisdiction is invited to come forward at this time. We allow three minutes for you to give a presentation. Please don't address any particular city council member, but all of us as a whole. Seeing no one move, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Special events. We have a special presentation in recognition of retiring employee. And we invite Phil Cup to the podium.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. As you said, this is to celebrate the retirement of Phil Myers. And I just, a couple of things about Phil's long history here at the City of Cholo. It's a pretty short speech, so, and then I want to get Phil maybe to say something too. So Phil started working in the City of Cholo on February 24th, 1999. And his last day was last Friday, September 3rd. That's 22 years, seven months and 10 days. Phil served in the wastewater crew for over 18 years. And in that time, among other things, he cleaned countless miles of sewer pipe. A thankless job, but thank you, Phil. For the last four years, he served in the engineering department as an inspector. And his years of experience in the field were a great asset to the engineering department. And we all miss Phil's unique energetic personality and vocabulary. So, most of you don't know this, but the city wasn't Phil's first service job. One of his first jobs was working as a roller skating car hop at a Tasty Freeze. That's an image. Phil is also a talented drummer and singer, and many of us have been entertained by the music he makes. Anyway, please join me in congratulating Phil on his retirement. And Phil, if you'd like to say if you were ate up here.
I never put skates on my way. I was a car hopper.
So that's an urban legend. That's an urban legend.
That was a giant lie right there. Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you. I've known a lot of you people for a long time. It's been nice. Been great.
Well, Phil, we have something to recognize you.
Hopefully he's next. Better be, huh?
Thank you for all your years of putting up with our crap. We're going to miss you. And we congratulate you and wish you all the healthy and hope and healthiness in your retirement. Enjoy it. We'll miss you, but we're proud of you and all your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm new to your community. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I'm new to your community. And I didn't, when I heard you say, come up, I didn't realize that's when we come up to ask a question.
Okay.
So I was wondering if I could still ask my question, if I still, am I allowed to do this?
Yeah, we can take seconds.
Thank you. My general plan overall was to move the Cholo for.
Can we ask you to give your name and address?
Sorry. It's Robert Williams. And I'm currently purchasing 980 North 24th Drive here in Cholo. But my overall plan was to use this for seasonal. And now I'm retired military, retired post office. I wanted to get out of the heat, come up here and enjoy it. We bought a fifth wheel to travel, which we done, we didn't get to do last year because of COVID, but we did this year. We off cruising, but we want to make Cholo our second home. Doing all my research and stuff, I was finding prices were right. And I couldn't buy a home because my budget wouldn't allow me to do that. So I started looking at vacant lots. And I was looking for vacant lots that were accessible with utilities already on the, next to the property line and forth. And I found one, so I purchased it. And then I come to find out that, well, APS was giving me a $10,000 grant to put my electric in. The gas was free, they just wanted me to do the trenching. And then I got to the city for sewer and water. And I talked to Kathy, I can't pronounce her name. However, she works somewhere in your department. And she told me that my fees were going to be almost $7,000, yeah, almost $7,000. And I was like, why? And she said, well, it's impact fees. And I didn't quite understand that. So, you know, I tried to ask questions and she said, well, that's what the city mandates as they want. And so everybody I asked, they said, well, these fees are ridiculously high. And well, take consideration, I live in Phoenix. I got an 1,800 square foot home. And my electric and water, I mean, my water and sewer bill is average maybe $600 a year. So at $7,500, you're talking almost 10 years before the impact would even take effect, seeing I'm only going to be here three or four months. But she said, it's up to the city. So I started calling around different lots that were for sale in the city, in a vacant lot. And I was getting more or less the same thing. I said, well, why are you selling your lot? Because we can't afford the fees. So I talked to my wife. She says, well, I wasted my time to come down to talk to you. But I wanted to see if there's any way we can ask for reconsideration on the fees. I mean, in your general plan, you say you want to make it economical and you want people to be able to buy homes or that'll live here, to buy homes and, or build homes. But you go out, you go out there, you can't afford these because of this $7,000 fee. I mean, my property line is right here, and here's your water. I'm going to run it 30 feet from my trailer and they're going to connect to it. This one cost me $7,000. And everybody I talked to, and I called 10 people that are selling lots here in Cholo. And I was asking them why they were selling. And they said, because of the fees. They can't afford to put a mobile home or build on it because of the fees. So I was just asking for consideration. Next time you vote or next, however it works, if there's any way you can consider lowering the fees. I mean, some of us are private people versus developers. I mean, developers probably wouldn't handle a problem with the fees. But you take an simple individual that, I'm on retirement, I'm on social security, that's, you know, $7,000 out. Then I got to have a survey, an elevation survey. That's another $1,500. I got to have, what else was it? There was something else. And it comes to total, I'm looking at $10,000 just to put a mobile home, $100,000 mobile home on the lot. And I'm just wondering if you could look into it and see if there's any way you can reconsider the fees or lower the fees.
So your three minutes is up.
I figured that. I'm trying to speak as fast as I could.
Another three minutes, but if you can call our city manager.
Okay.
At 532-4015. He can speak with you about how those are figured, how those fees are figured and let you know.
Probably saying something Kathy told me when she talked to me on the phone. Yeah, and that's why she said I had to come talk to the city. So, okay. My wife was right. All right. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is consent calendar. Is there anybody that would like to have an item removed from the agenda at this time? No? First item is proclamation of the mayor proclaiming September 2021 as Fall's Prevention Awareness Month. Consideration of Resolution Number R 2021-22, abandoning drainage easement. Consideration of Resolution R 2021-23, approving the intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Public Safety for GIDM. Consideration of acceptance of grant funds from the Arizona State Library. For the library. Consideration of acceptance of grants, grant funds from Site Starter for the library. Consideration of acceptance of a grant from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety for DUI enforcement. Consideration of authorization to purchase fishing docks for Cholo Lake. Consideration of addendum to a pasture lease agreement. And consideration of minutes of the Cholo City Council on the special meeting of August 17th and the regular meeting of August 17th. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Councilman Adams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those in dissent? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is new business. Consideration of acceptance of airport master plan for the Cholo Regional Airport. We'll call upon Jacob Allen.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. The City of Cholo was awarded a Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program Grant to prepare the airport master plan. Following the award of the grant, Armstrong Consultants began preparing the plan in 2017 and completed the final report in March of 2021. As part of the master plan process, public workshops were held as well as four meetings of the Technical Advisory Committee, or TAC. TAC consisted of airport tenants, the United States Forest Service, FAA, state aeronautics, and others. The TAC meetings also included city staff members and the Aviation Advisory Committee. Three separate phases of the master plan were presented at TAC meetings for review and comment. All comments were received from TAC members and the Aviation Advisory Committee, the public were, and the public, and then were forwarded to Armstrong for consideration. Based on the comments received, preferred airfield and landside development alternatives were determined. And the final master plan lists these preferred alternatives as ultimate proposed airport development. The final phase of the master plan included the submission of the airport layout plan to the FAA and the Arizona Department of Transportation Aeronautics for review and approval. Both agencies have been involved in the process since the beginning. And then upon city council approval, the master plan will serve as the airport's development guideline for the next 20 years, although changes may be made in the interim. It also will be the basis by which all financial funding grants are determined and scheduled during the master plan period. Chapter seven details the short, short and long-term funding needs based on the improvements listed in the plan. Projected improvements over the next 20 years are estimated to cost over $42.7 million, with the majority of this funding coming from the FAA and ADOT. The city's portion of these improvements is tentatively allocated to slightly over $1 million over the 20-year period. And approval of the master plan does not obligate the city to develop any of the depicted items on the airport layout plan. And tonight, Armstrong Consultants has prepared a presentation on the airport master plan. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
Thanks for having us out. My name is Jason Musselman. I'm the program manager for Armstrong Consultants. I handle the Arizona projects. Matt Thomason is with us here. He's the planner. He was the one that was out here doing the inspections and working on the plan throughout the process. This is the culmination of several years of activity, of planning work. And the city should be proud of the work that was done, that you guys did, that the staff and the teams have done. So with that, I'll pass it on to Matt.
Thanks. Thanks for having us. I just kind of wanted to give a brief overview of what the master plan is and kind of the background on what it's intended for. So when you break it down, it's really two pieces. You have the narrative report, which I believe you guys have in front of you, a document that provides a technical analysis and identifies those projects and development for that 20-year planning phase. We go through and we do a forecast of aviation demand. And we identify the needs for the airport in the short, intermediate, and long term to make sure that they can accommodate that forecast. That being said, it is a forecast and things do change. We can't predict the future. And as Jake has mentioned, it's very flexible. It's not set in stone what's shown on there. And then the other part of the master plan is the ALP. And that's that graphic that I'll be showing a little later that you use to basically lay out and see what's, where the development's going to occur. And really, in the end, that's going to be your funding tool when you go to the FAA and ask for grants. The first thing that they do when you have a project that's coming up that you want to develop is they go to the ALP, they open it up and they say, is that project on there? Is it listed? And if so, then they can go to the next process, next step for grant funding. If not, then they say, well, it's not on your ALP, it's not eligible. So in the end, it's really a marketing tool and a funding tool used. So this is the ALP. It's, as Jake has said, it's been reviewed by the city, the state, and then the FAA as well. And that's really the graphical depiction, the culmination of all the technical analysis and findings that occurred throughout the master plan laid out on an aerial there. And you can see, there's a lot of, a lot of lines, it's kind of hard to read. But there's a lot of FAA design standards that have to go into where you can allow development to occur and lay it out. And so that all has to be considered when you're looking at long-term development for the airport. So just want to get into kind of some of the things of what the airport master plan does and then some of the things that it doesn't. As I was saying about those FAA design standards, the number one thing for the FAA is safety. And they, the first thing they want to do when it comes to handing out grants is make sure that the airport meets all the design standards, setbacks, and, and make sure that the airport's really safe for the operators. And then, so after moving on from that, making sure that all the design standards are met, then you go into that long-term development of where things can be, development can be placed to provide the efficient airport layout. And then also, you know, not impeding on potential other development items either on or off the airfield. And then what it does not do, as Jake was saying, it doesn't require, just because it's shown on the LP, the city is not obligated to fund or to develop any of these items. It's really based on demand. And when it comes to FAA grant funding, they need to see, most of the time, they need to see the demand before they're going to fork out the money to pay for it. And then also, each of these projects, when it comes to FAA money and grant funding, is going to require environmental clearance through NEPA. And the master plan takes into consideration high-level environmental considerations, but it doesn't, when it comes down to project by project basis, it's not going to provide that environmental clearance. Once the project is in development, that's when we start the environmental process and go through that, whether that be a CADDX, which is a categorical exclusion, and then, or an EA, which is kind of just levels that the FAA requires for the process of environmental clearance. And it goes simplest CADDX, environmental assessment, EA, and then environmental impact statement. And it really just depends on the type of project, based on what that environmental clearance is. So this is kind of just an easier to read graphic for the recommended development that the master plan identified. You can see the yellow colored pavement, that's new future pavement. And then the blue is new development on structures, buildings, hangars, terminal buildings, and that sort of thing. And then the green kind of shaded area, that's identified as the existing airport property line. And then red is where the future property line to be acquired is at. So that's kind of all we really have for you. If you have any questions or comments, be welcome to answer.
Is there any questions?
It's a monumental task to write that, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's a big document.
It's a monumental task to go through and read what I could of it, so.
Absolutely. We appreciate it.
So I asked earlier, what did you find is the greatest challenge in developing our airport? And what is the greatest advantage that we have with our airport and its location?
Yeah, I mean, as we were talking before, you know, the, having the long runway is really an advantage for you guys, especially at this altitude. And you, you have plenty of runway to be able to get all these air in operation.
Yeah, the challenge, the challenge is really, that's a good thing, obviously. The positive that Matt mentioned is you have a great facility. The infrastructure's here. You don't have to do a lot of infrastructure to get the next level improvement. The challenge is, the challenge that most airports have, how do we go from where we are today to the next step? Development, the need, the interest in the community, the developer interest. I've been in conversation with staff for folks that have been wanting to come in and build hangars. That's the next step. That's the driving force behind getting the development to move forward. And that's always the challenge. That's the biggest challenge is getting to that next step. The next step is always the.
Would the challenge be to, to have a reliable airline that will go ahead and accommodate the things that the people of Cholo, Pine Top, Lakeside, Holbrook, and everything around here can utilize instead of just Cholo?
Sure, reliable airline services is always a big, is always a big need. Cholo Regional Airport has what's called a central air service. It's government subsidized air carrier service. It's a great thing to have. Many, most communities don't have it. The FAA has defined this, this area as an economically depressed area. So you have two things going for you. You have the EAS, central air service, plus you have a higher percentage of funding from the FAA, 95% versus 91% for the rest of the state. So you have those two things working for you. And getting more passengers, a lot more passengers, we're not talking about a handful more passengers will get you to the next level. The next level for FAA funding is 10,000 passengers. And I believe last time we talked about it, annually, you were down in the 3,000 range. So the next level gets you about $1 million a year, but that's far off. And, and getting another carrier that may be more reliable might be able to get you there. That's something that the carrier would have to be able to do.
Next question would be, without doing anything to our runways, what size of planes can we go ahead and use to take off and land here?
That's a great question. So you're, right now, the airport reference code, the FAA identifies airports by a reference code, and that's based upon the size aircraft that can go there. Right now, you're a B2. In your master plan, if you haven't have a copy on, in front of you, if you want to turn to page 2-28, you'll see a very nice exhibit that identifies size by aircraft reference code and the associated aircraft. Right now, you're a B2. You used to be a C3. Your infrastructure for your primary runway is basically a C3. You got a lot of space, you got a lot of width, you got a lot of length. Your infrastructure is in good shape. Right now, you're sitting at a B2 though, which is a little bit smaller. It's actually a fair amount smaller. And what that is, is generally business aircraft. For those of you that know, your Citation Latitudes, Citation Tens.
The exec.
The executive jets, thank you. So you have those coming in quite regularly right now, all the time. And that's really the size of airport reference code that you are. The next step would be moving up into the C3 category, which would be kind of a regional jet type scenario where you're, you're bringing in air carrier, large air carrier, you know, like 70, 80-seat air carriers, and that's that range. So you're well suited right now for the traffic you have.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Sorry, I have one more. The city's talked about a crosswind runway for many years. Can you talk to us about the challenges and what we face with establishing crosswind runway?
Sure. Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, so the, or to speak kind of simply for aviation, runways, when smaller airplanes come in and there's a crosswind, it's hard for them to land. It's not safe generally when it gets up to a certain speed. So the FAA, they prescribe that they'll fund, or it's eligible for funding, a crosswind runway when that threshold drops below a certain amount for those aircraft. And they can't safely operate on just the one runway. So as of right now, with the current configuration, you guys are under that threshold slightly. So they, technically, it is eligible for funding on FAA's standards. The challenge is FAA really, it's a struggle to get new pavement, especially runways built in the FAA. They first really want you just to maintain existing pavements. And then with extra discretionary money, that's where they really look at developing those crosswind runways. So it's a challenge, but you guys are eligible for that funding.
That brings up part two of the question, is the plan to go there, to get that runway. So the next five years is where that takes place. The first year of the project, which is this coming year, is 2022. It is, it is kind of getting your facility ready to go so that you can say, when the time comes, we, we're done. Let's move towards this new runway. We're done with the existing infrastructure, it's in good shape. Let's move on to this next. And so this, this coming year, we have our aircraft firefighting equipment and some lighting, LED lighting to help with power demand and again, being more self-sufficient, saving some money where we can. And then we roll into that, that crosswind, the environmental for the crosswind runway. The environmental assessment Matt mentioned before, there's, there's levels of environmental. There's the CADDX, which is small, lower level projects. And then you have an EA, which would be the runway. It involves a lot of earthwork. It's a multimillion dollar project that would be funded by the FAA when the time comes. That would require a large environmental effort, about a year to a year and a half to do that environmental. And then we go into design and then, and then we go into construction. And the real challenge, as Matt mentioned, is to get the FAA on board with it. Pressure, 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 political pressure also help. And get them on board as well. Once they spend money on it, it'll happen. You have to get them to do.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions from the council? Thank you, gentlemen.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion for consideration of acceptance of the airport master plan. Councilman Adams?
I move to accept the 2021 Cholo Regional Airport Master Plan Final Report.
Wait a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Hatch. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. The next item on the agenda is consideration of award of construction contract for Sugar Pine Way sidewalk improvement, City of Cholo Project Number R-1522. Mr. Hamasal.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. The city was approached by Torion to partner on a sidewalk connectivity project along the public roadway, West Sugar Pine Way. The city agreed to design the project and the construction costs would be split between the city and Torion. The city's fiscal year 2021 capital improvement budget includes $120,000 for a sidewalk connectivity project labeled Sugar Pine Way Sidewalk. Scope of this project, the work includes. Pine Way sidewalk. Scope of this project, the work includes installing a five foot sidewalk, ADA ramps, and required drainage facilities along West Sugar Pine Way. Concrete will be colored to match the existing colored concrete curb and gutter. Now, the proposed improvements are located along the north side of Sugar Pine Way from Summit Trail to the clubhouse roundabout. The project was designed by city engineering staff with a construction cost estimate of one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. The project was bid publicly bid according to statutory requirements with the following results. McCullough Construction at one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and zero cents and Development Specialists at one hundred and fifty seven thousand and six hundred and twenty one dollars and zero cents. Saff recommends awarding construction contract for the Sugar Pine Way sidewalk improvements, City of Sholo project R one five two two, to McCullough Construction Incorporated in that amount not to exceed that one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the associated budget transfers. The bid tabulation for the work is attached and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
Yeah, I was, I was reading through and everything else and seeing that, you know, City, City of Sholo and Torion is going to go in on this and, and work together to make this sidewalk. Think if anybody's been down in that area, a lot of people walk those roads and everything else. And, and so it's a good safety feature to have for, for people to walk on that, on those sidewalks and plus they're five foot wide as the three, like normal downtown stuff is. So I'm glad to see that we're working with a, a developer of a subdivision that we can both win, it's a both win-win situation for us. So I, I really appreciate that. So thank you for staff for going out and doing that.
Any other comments, questions? Take a motion?
I, I award, I move to award the construction contract for Sugar Pine Way sidewalk improvements, City of Sholo project R dash fifteen dash twenty two, McCullough Construction in court, in amount not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and authorize the associated budget transfers.
I have a second. Councilman Clark. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Lee opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hamasal. Don't go far. Next item on the agenda is consideration of award of professional service contract for design of Nicholas subdivision sewer replacement project, City of Sholo project number S dash ten twenty two.
Thank you for asking, Mayor. City's fiscal year 2022 budget, five year capital improvement program includes six hundred and sixty thousand dollars for sewer replacement project labeled Sixth and Fifth Place or Nicholas subdivision sewer replacement. Scope of the work includes replacing the aging six inch play sewer infrastructure with new eight inch PVC sewer mains and new, brand new manholes. The improvements are located in portions of South Fifth Place, Sixth Place, East Merrill, East Mills, East Nicholas and East Oliver. City solicited a proposal from Woodson Engineering to perform necessary design services. Scope of the proposal includes conducting other required project survey, preparing construction design documents, coordinating with Arizona Department of Environmental Quality for approvals to construct, providing construction staking for the work and completing record drawings or as built after the improvements are made. The proposed, the proposed cost for these services is seventy one thousand, nine hundred dollars. Detailed scope of services is attached. Saff recommends awarding the professional services contract for design of the Nicholas subdivision sewer replacement project, City of Sholo project S one zero two two, to Woodson Engineering and Surveying Incorporated in the amount not to exceed that seventy one thousand, nine hundred dollars and authorize the associated budget transfer. And the scope of services is attached. I'm available for questions.
Anyone have a question or comment? Is this part of the original play lines that was placed in downtown?
They're, they're pretty old. Yeah, I think they're probably going back to the sixties, like some of the other ones in the area were replaced.
I'd say it's about time then.
Yeah.
I'll take a motion, please.
I'll move to award the professional service contract for the design of the Nicholas subdivision sewer replacement project, City of Sholo project number S ten twenty two, to Woodson Engineering and Surveying Incorporated in amount not to exceed seventy one thousand, nine hundred dollars and authorize the associated budget transfers.
Councilman Alsop, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's no dissent. The motion carries unanimously. The next item on the, next item on the agenda is summary of current events. Is there any council that has an item to propose? Councilman Adams?
Got two I'd like to say again. We had the opportunity to go down to the League of Cities with a couple council members and staff and had a real good time, learned a lot. And had a lot of good information, good things going on in the state and what's been what'll be coming up. So I had a real good, real good time down there learning and that's my first one. So I got kind of the baptizing of, of the whole process, but it was a great experience and I'm very grateful for that opportunity to go down there with staff and council members and, and, and experience that. And the other thing I was going to say is had the opportunity to take my family to the History Center or History Museum here in Sholo. And anyone new in Sholo who wants to kind of find out what we're about and what our history is, I recommend they go down there and, and spend some time.
Councilman Hatch, did you have anything?
Yes, we had a very successful Battle of the Bands. It was a good turnout. It had an impact on the marketplace. A lot of people that were at the marketplace doing their spread there moved over to that venue. But all in all, people were quite pleased. I understood that. Thank you.
Councilman Alsop?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Went down to the League of Cities and Towns again with Councilman Adams and Art. We had a great time. There's a lot of classes going on and so you have to pick different classes you wanted to go to. So I think I went to like six of them. But there's two things that really hit me. One is our keynote speaker, Rick Rizby. If you have never seen him, he's been on Facebook before. He's done some speaking at different colleges. Just a really down to earth guy. And that's what his stuff is all about is down to earth. He took all his teaching and education and whippens and everything else from a third degree graduate, his dad, and taught him how to do a lot of different things. So just a great, great speaker. The last thing I went to was short term rentals and discussions. And there was a city manager from Park Springs, California, and an attorney from Colorado. And it's something that's, it's, it's hit all different communities, not just in Sholo and Pine Top, but all over the, the state. And it's something that we have to see what we can do to help protect the people that live in our subdivisions that is here 24 hour, 24 seven and like the quietness and likes the trees and likes the beauty of everything that's going on instead of party until two or three o'clock in the morning and hoopla and fifteen or fourteen trucks drive, you know, down, park down the road and, and garbage left out and garbage is not picked up for another seven days. And so there's a lot of that stuff going on. And we're, like I said, we're not the only community up here in the mountains that is looking this over and, and it's impacting all of us to even have our crews go out there and clean things up. So it's something that I really believe that we need to look at. And I know our city manager and, and our attorney here is looking at that stuff all the time anyway. So, but it's just something that really caught my eye and I really wanted to go to on that one. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to, I just want to echo what Councilman Adams and Councilman Alsop said about the league. It was a great opportunity, a great opportunity to learn from the different communities. I want to thank Rachel and Nicole. They did a great job getting us set up. It was flawless, all of the things. I showed up at City Hall and they had all my travel packets and all that. So thank you ladies for doing that. I really appreciate it. And I want to thank Councilman Alsop too for what he's done is we send, as the city, we send a delegate of, of high school students who get to go down and spend a day there and they're, you know, future leaders from the, the school district. And Councilman Alsop does a great thing where he goes and has lunch with them and he gets to share opportunities, like to, you know, talk to them and just kind of pick their brains. And so I want to thank you for doing that. My son was one of the delegates as well as there was three other students. And they really appreciated that, that, that they got to know one of their council members and get the, the opportunity to kind of rub shoulders with them. So thank you for doing that and making that impact with them. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman Alsop. The only thing I have tonight is I'd like to congratulate the House for their reopening. We're very excited to have that business reopen in our community. You know, they've, they and a lot of other businesses in town have gone through a lot of hardship and I think they were one of the hardest hit and we're very happy that they were able to reopen. And I'll turn it over to city manager, Mr. Mutter.
Thank you. So the Recreation Department's having a, what they call a dip and dash. It's a swim in our fun run for ages five and up to Saturday, September 11th. Registration ends this Thursday. If you're interested in that, you can contact five three two forty one thirty for more information. September is National Library Card signup month. And our library will be giving away prizes for all new library cardholders. So it's an opportunity to sign up this month. And just to note, if you're used to driving between Superior and Miami on US 60, they plan a full closure of that highway from September 12th to September 17th, while they build the connections and transition to traffic onto the new Pendle Creek Bridge. And the closure is scheduled right now from 10 PM Sunday, September 12th until Friday, September 17th at noon. Of course, it's subject to change based on weather. And, but that's been a long term project and it'll be good for those that travel that direction once they're complete there. Just wanted to add on to what Councilman Hatch said to thank all the groups that were involved in many activities over this past Labor Day weekend, farmer's market and the battle on vans and van, vans and vans that was put on by Main Street. We also had some state BMX races that were put on by the Bag family, very well attended. They had the veterans fly in by walking down ranch at the airport. That was a three day event. And also there was a pickleball clinic this weekend. So a lot of things were happening this weekend in Sholo. And we just want to thank those different organizations that worked on those events. And finally, just want to congratulate Mike Alsop, Councilman Alsop, at the League of Arizona Cities and Towns. He received his 12 year service award for serving on the council for 12 years.
Remind me what the date of our retreat is? Monday, October 18?
October 18th. Yes.
Is there any other meetings that need to be scheduled at this time?
Just to let you know that next council meeting, September 21st, we'll have our Student Government Day that day. It's scheduled that day. And that's when we have some of the members of the Sholo High School Student Council sit with the council and help run the meeting.
Thank you. Any other items?
That's it.
I see nothing else on the agenda at this time. So we'll adjourn. Just wanted to get a chance to bring back your cards.